Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting of September 14th, 2021. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we, did you have a sign-in sheet, Jim?
Being passed around.
All right, great, thank you.
Pitch it to the punch.
No, I just, I just saw that we, I got some memos from the Select Board's office saying that we should have a sign-in sheet because of the COVID conditions. Thank you. All right, so, public hearings tonight. First is, this is continued from August 31st, is on the application of Ironwood Renewable LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. And this is located at 223 Meadow Street, which is Assessors Map 82 Lot 1-1 in Carver, Mass. to allow the construction of a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. It's 3.75 megawatt DC ground-mounted solar project. The level of development is 14.7 acres with 12.7 acres of clearing. Property is located in a residential agricultural district. And as I said before, this is continued from August 31st, 2021. All right. Do you have anything to say before?
No, I think we just should have, Ironwood do their presentation.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing, so we didn't close, I don't believe we closed the public hearing, so it's still open. All right, if you could go ahead and identify yourself, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my name's Hamilton Carrier, project developer for Ironwood Renewables. Just wanted to introduce my team real quick. Greg Dixon, project engineer with Krebs &amp; Lansing, projects environmental scientist. Dale Knapp out of BRI Environmental, and Ironwood's council, Phil Mackey with Mackey &amp; Mackey. Just real quick, appreciate you guys' patience for the continuing units last week, or two weeks ago, we had the hurricane come through down in Louisiana, so appreciate that. I wanted to run down some of the project characteristics real quick, make some changes to the introduction. You just had some of it's kind of changed, I guess since we opened this back up almost a year ago. So, as you said, the project's located at 223 Meadow Street, that's in South Harbor, near the Middle Borough line. The site consisted of 25.8 acres before the A&R plan that you guys went over last meeting. It's now 24.1 acres total. With that, the total disturbance of the project proposed is 11.1 acres, with 9.8 acres of that being inside of the security fence. As you said, the property is zoned RA. You know, currently, the site conditions are dominated by regenerating forest and overgrown brush. As you guys, or some of you guys saw in the site walk, there are numerous demolished vehicles, scrap, you know, mattresses. It's just a site that's been kind of overgrown and not really taken care of. So, Ironwood's goal here is to refurbish the site, use about 41% of the site for a solar farm, and the rest would retain as, you know, the forest it is today. As I mentioned, 11.1 acres is the total area that's disturbed. Our last meeting, we had the six utility poles for the interconnection proposed. We have since changed that to underground, so it will all be underground up into the POI, which is across the street from Meadow Street. So, that was a change you guys had requested, and we made that. In terms of setbacks, we did, that was, I guess, our one waiver for the project. We do have a 50-foot setback and signed waiver on the north side of the project, as well as the eastern side of the project. The south side of the project will remain 200 feet from the property line to the project fence. In terms of frontage, as I went over on the A&R plan last time, the lot does have 150-foot frontage, and it's approximately, the fence would be 400-plus feet from Meadow Street, so you would not see the project from the street when you pass by. Let's see. We met with Brooke Monroe on site. As she mentioned in one of her memos, we are 100 feet from any jurisdictional wetland and 200 feet from the river district, so we're not falling in any of the jurisdictions of the Conservation Commission. We also met with the fire department, Jesse Boyle, in two different occasions, and have had memos that he drafted. Basically, he has approved the emergency access road, which I can have Greg go in more detail if you guys would like. And the battery storage on the site is basically with conditions that, you know, closer to construction, if the site is approved, we will go over that with Jesse, you know, due to changing technology. You know, other than that, it's a pretty straightforward project, we believe. You know, we're not exceeding the 50% of the maximum density. We're at about 40.8%. So, you know, we're following everything in the bylaw. Like I said, the only waiver we requested was for setbacks, just to make the project feasible. So, we're open to questions, can go over anything. Like I said, I have the engineer, environmental scientists, and council for our team as well.
Okay. Just, I think you mentioned this, but the fire department has taken a look at this?
That's correct. Yeah, we met with them twice, went over the emergency access. Greg, did you have any points on the?
No, we seem pretty comfortable with access in general. His biggest point was...
If you could, if, I'm sorry to, if you could just go up to the microphone, and if you could grab a chair to sit down, and just give us your name, please, and company you represent.
I am Greg Dixon with Krebs &amp; Lansing.
Excuse me, Greg?
The engineer.
Bring that closer. Thanks.
The engineer on the project. We did meet with him. His biggest concern was the battery, and once we actually decide what battery we're going to use, he would like to see the specs on it and see what's in it, so he can evaluate how to put a fire out if there's one there. But just with the changing of technology on it, we mentioned that this project, even if, or if it gets approved, would probably not be built until later. Just because of technology changing over time, he said that's fine. We can meet with him closer to construction.
They were happy with access?
Yes.
Around the field for any kind of fire equipment that would have to go around there?
Yep. He said the roads were sufficient to the locations that he was most concerned about, and also mentioned that if there's fire anywhere else, they would just tear the fence down and get to it. So, but he was comfortable and confident with what we're showing on the plan right now.
Do we have a letter stating that?
We have two letters on file. I can read those to you.
And if I may, Mr. Jeff, he wasn't asking for any money for training for the continued ...
Well, that, that's a, that's basically an ongoing condition for solar projects. So, we do have comment letters from the fire department dated February 12th, 2021, and August 8th, 2021.
All right. Saying that the access was...
Right.
All right for fire equipment.
Now, we have additional conditions in there that, once they start construction, before they get a building permit, they have to kind of, again, you know, reach out to the fire department to make sure the access is adequate once the equipment's in there.
Okay. All right. What sort of fencing is being put up around this? Can you describe the fencing that's going to be put up around the field?
Yep. It's an agricultural-style fence, so it's not like a chain link. It'll have wider squares. I think you see it around, like, keeps in cattle and stuff like that.
Made up of?
It's wire with, like, six-by-six squares.
Okay. And it's wooden posts?
I don't know about that now. It could be either wooden or metal. I don't know what the...
Yeah, it's a seven-foot-high fence, but that's kind of, you know, our plan is agricultural style fence. There's different styles you can choose that are in the market, so.
Okay.
Sorry, three answers to the same question. So, I'm Dale Knapp, I'm with BRI, and typically what's being used on most solar projects being built in the region right now is actually eight-foot-tall agricultural fence because of the size they produce it in. They don't produce it in a seven-foot length with a cedar post. It fits better into the natural landscape than a chain-link fence, and so when we're designing these projects, it's being done intentionally. Not that you'll see the fence unless you get kind of through the woods to access it, but even still, it's more of a, of an aesthetic choice, and it still meets the need described in the National Electric Code, and so there's a benefit to it.
Okay.
Just one more point, too. There's detail on C1.02 in the top left-hand corner. I know it's not like a picture of one, but it could give you a better idea of what we're thinking.
Let's see, okay. All right. I did see the memo that you sent us about the project and how it met the zoning requirements. I thought that was pretty thorough.
Yeah. That was our whole point of this project. It's a pretty tight, tightly-fit project in terms of panel spacing. Reason being is we were trying to follow the bylaw to basically T. The only reason we didn't, you know, we had to get waivers is because, you know, 200 feet for a very skinny property is hard to do. So, we were able to obtain waivers, but other than that, everything is followed to T on the bylaw.
And then there were, I saw a lot of comments from Fussin' O'Neil, from Andy Glines. Andy, could you speak about this? And just to make sure that you're satisfied with the project?
Good evening. Andy Glines, professional civil engineer for Fussin' O'Neil and the town's engineering consultant. I issued a final, I guess, latest memo regarding this project. There is a couple pages there. A lot of the text is recommended conditions of approval for the board to consider, which Jim Walsh typically will incorporate into the approval letter for this type of project. There is a handful of remaining plan and detail comments on the last couple pages. In my professional opinion, those are minor enough in nature that the board could make a vote on this project, and those could be addressed as a condition of approval, you know, pending final sign-off from Fussin' O'Neil, and then administrative approval through Jim Walsh, if that's something that the board would consider. In general, a lot of those comments pertain to minor tweaks in layouts of swales or just cleaning up the drawings for clarity, and I don't think any of those comments would drastically change the nature of the project or any of the town regulations that the board would be reviewing. I do know that the board had some questions and concerns about site density and clearing in the past. I did want to acknowledge those concerns at the top of the memo, but in lieu of writing a novel, I figured it would just be more proactive to come tonight and discuss and provide my professional opinion on any of those concerns the board had tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you, Andy.
Mr. Chair, just a note regarding Andy's comments about cleanup of the site plans. Condition one of the decision notes that requires the applicant to make those changes and then come back at the next planning board meeting just to, you know, approve those minor changes to the, to the site plan, so that that way, you know, they get taken care of, and then it's done very quickly, so that, you know, it's not something we're hanging out there for a long time.
So, you're saying if this was approved tonight, that...
Right. They'd be required to come back...
Okay.
By September 28th with revised revisions to the plan, with minor revisions.
All right. All right. I guess those are all the questions I have. I imagine the planning board members have some questions, so I'll open it up to any members of the planning board that like to ask anything. Mr. Shea?
Yes, I see the access road. Is that an existing road? It seems to, I can't tell how far it is off the property to the north. It seems very tight. And then I noticed that you're putting, planning on putting equipment vaults, like, abutting the property, and I, I'm not so sure that that's within our scope of approval. I think you still have to set it, everything, a minimum of 10 feet off the property line. And as that's project equipment, technically, it should be 50 feet off of any waived property.
It is not an existing access road. That is how we're planning on any, interconnecting it, so I don't think we can have 50 feet off any of the property lines. They are abutters of it, and maybe we can get waivers for that, or we can also put that equipment on the other side of the road.
I believe you already got waivers for them for up to the 50-foot, but I also see that you got telephone poles, or it appears that they are on the abutters property. I can see the line crosses the abutters property, but from what I can tell from this, it looks like you're planning on putting... I know, I'm not entirely certain, because it's so very small, but clearly the telephone lines are crossing over, and your equipment is right on the property line. And there's no way to differentiate for us the distance from that property line to a road, which is part of the project, because if it hasn't been in existence, then it's, it's a new road as part of the project, and I have some questions about that. I also noticed that you only got three of the six required waivers in regards to setbacks. Did you get the other three? Were you planning on getting the other three? I see Mr. Shirtlift, Mr. Shirtlift, and Mr. Peltoya. You gave them 200 feet, but our bylaws clearly call for all abutters, all direct abutters to sign the waivers. And in section 3580, 25.1, it says, "We can reduce it to a minimum of 50 feet, provided standard setbacks and screening requirements are waived in writing by all direct abutters in a residential district, residential agricultural zoning district. An affidavit signed by all owners of record of all direct abutters within a residential agricultural zoning district must be on file with the planning board." So, I'm curious, what, have you gotten those? Were you planning on getting those?
So, on one of our other projects, we received an opinion on the requirement for all direct abutters versus those directly impacted, and legal counsel provided an opinion that...
I disagree with legal counsel, and I think they were wrong, but on the last one we approved, there was a 600-plus-foot differentiation between the project and the next nearest abutter, which does, which does allow us to provide certain reduced screening in regards to the project. But as I see this now, the words "all direct abutters" and "all owners of record of all direct abutters" is pretty, pretty clear in regards to this, and frankly, I think our legal counsel is overstepping their bounds by...
Well, that's, that's what our legal counsel is for, is to...
Well, I disagree with it. So, this is, this, I would, in order for me to approve this, I would need to have a waiver from all direct abutters. It's, it's that's, and I would also like to see some changes to this entrance where you've, you've put equipment right up against the property line, and the, and the current owner might be fine with it, but who's to say she's not going to sell the day after this is all set up? And the fact that the, the telephone lines actually run over a property, if not, if there's, it looks like a telephone pole, but I can't tell. It's not, it's very difficult here.
Well, Connie, I think they were saying that everything going out to the street, all that's going to be underground until it gets to the road.
To those particular vaults. And then there's three vaults that are on the property line. I mean, on the property line. You can see the three little square vaults there.
So, that equipment will be owned and operated by Eversource, which obviously we don't have all that technical information now. We can make recommendations to them, but they are an entity that we work with, and they also have the ability to put up lines and stuff like that.
Well, that's correct, but, but what we're approving now, we can't approve, because this equipment is, is within a zone that we're not authorized. It's well, it's a structure, and it's well within the setbacks of what the town of Carver requires. We don't allow virtually anything within 10 feet of somebody else's property, especially not heavy-duty electrical equipment with the potential for noise. And again, if it was moved to a more appropriate place, maybe the lines wouldn't be crossing over the neighbor's property or encroaching on it.
If we, if we could, go ahead, Andy.
I'm looking for the particular section regarding this. I haven't found it yet, but I can for the board. But I do believe that there is a exemption for interconnection equipment to be located within the 50-feet minimum buffer in this regard. So, essentially, no, you wouldn't be able to interconnect to, for most sites, if you had to stay 50 feet away from all abutters. So, that kind of, it provides the exemption. I'm looking for the particular language in the regs. I haven't found it yet, but I will.
I do agree with that, yes, but I can see that there's a pole. It looks like it's 40 feet down the road, which, as an interconnection point, would be just fine, as opposed to one that crosses over another property. And although we do allow certain reductions in the 50-foot, we, we don't allow structures to be built within the 10-foot buffer zone between properties, and that, that's my biggest concern.
And I think it would be a reasonable request for the applicant to move that equipment, as well as that utility pole, to the other side of the road and provide more of a buffer at that location. I, I guess I defer to the applicant to speak to that.
But if I could just say one thing, before any equipment is installed along the roadway, that roadway edge would have to be marked out. The, it would, the property lines would be distinguished. And just having done surveying and engineering, you don't place equipment on other people's property. It's marked out, and then the, and then the equipment's placed on the correct property.
Right, and I agree with that, but...
And then, but that is also has to be reflected on the as-built, too.
Right, but this is...
They just can't put willy-nilly, you know, everywhere.
This is against the property line, and I don't feel that that is right or appropriate in any manner.
Well, let's see how you can address that.
The project is willing to put it on the other side and talk to Eversource to make that work.
All right. And what about the waivers?
Sorry, just to kind of close things out on the interconnection?
Sure.
Eversource is involved, the interconnecting utility is a critical component to this, and so these plans here are for permit review. There will be a construction plan set that Eversource is a part of in order to finalize this, and as he noted earlier, you know, compliance will involve Fussin' O'Neil as the sort of engineer representing the town to confirm that the project as-built complies with your rules.
Okay, so that, that answers your question about...
Well, unless the, are you planning on moving them to a different position in order to allow some amount of space, buffer zone? I mean, there's going to be a lot of trucks coming through this as it is, and then you're dealing with heavy electrical equipment that, that does, you know, it's, aside from health concerns, there's noise concerns with it, plus running lines over other people's property when there's another telephone pole 50 feet down the road, pole 11149 as opposed to 130. It just, it's, it really, it questions my, it questions, it makes me question some issues.
Could you, could you explain about the vaults? What the vaults look like? Do you have any idea what vaults look like and what they, what they do? I mean, I, I've been in, in the business, and I know something about the transformers and everything. I mean, in my neighborhood, they put, and in every neighborhood that has underground utilities, you have cable utilities. They're right on the property line, right on the edge of the road. Sometimes the engineers make easements on, on everybody's property to place the, the electrical transformers and the cable boxes and the Verizon boxes. So, you know, a lot of times, these are on, like, on my property, in my subdivision. So, but what is a vault, anyway?
Yep. So, these vaults will, will be your average vault. They're about, I think, seven and a half by 13 and a half, or something like that. These are not where the transformers will be located, which is the equipment that normally makes noise. These will be shut-offs and other electrical equipment that will make the transition from the project side of the project to Eversource's side of the project. And they'll each have their own individual shut-offs and equipment in order to make it work together, and that's what will be down at these locations.
Could you give, give me the dimensions again? I didn't quite catch it.
I think the top of them is about...
Oh, seven and a half inches?
Seven and a half by 13 and a half.
By 13 and a half inches.
No, feet.
So, each one of these is...
And I am not sure how many they'll, they'll need to have. I'm showing three right now, but it could be less.
So, these are quite large, then?
Yes.
They're fairly good sized, I think.
Yeah, this is the first time we've run into something like this.
Sure. It actually, it may be we're showing more detail than you've seen in the past, which is entirely possible.
Well, a lot of these are done by poles, and they have the transformers and things on the poles, and I know that, you know, people have complained about the poles, but to me, this, this is more...
Sure. So, the buried infrastructure is to comply with the bylaw, and so the only above-ground utility allowed is the point of interconnection, and so we're burying infrastructure. This, you know, if this was not a solar facility, I think you made a good analogy earlier regarding a municipal development home, or homes. If this was not being proposed as a solar farm and it was houses, you would see the same exact interconnection to Eversource, the same underground utility, the same types of vaults would be installed, just something different would be behind it. Is that helpful?
Somebody else's house, because as, as Bruce said, this is a community issue. When it comes to a subdivision, there's easements, and there's, and it's built into the development, and when they, they get in there, they understand what they're getting, but frankly, this is, I mean, you're really looking to put more or less a wall of equipment there, and it's really an inappropriate spot, regardless of who the homeowner is, or what their plans with the property are, or if they're co-owners, or if they're, you know, related to the owners of the property. It's, it's just a very short-sighted look at the interconnection there, and then you're asking to run pole, lines which say, I'm not sure, overhead, overhead connector or OHP, maybe? It's tough to read from here, over somebody else's property, and I would think that you would need some sort of waiver or agreement for something along those lines.
If I may, so, it's traditional that the utility provider will require multiple utility poles for their equipment. Then there's also the customer or owner equipment that needs to be installed and is operated by the operator of the solar array. Traditionally, in my experience, and a lot... Um, traditionally in my experience and a lot of other arrays that have been approved in Carver as well as other municipalities, uh, the owner and operator equipment is usually pole-mounted, uh, above grade. Um, my understanding for this project and this applicant, they're proposing to put as much equipment below grade in vaults, uh, as possible where it wouldn't be, um, uh, a raised structure like you would see a traditional transformer. Um, one of the comments I did make was to have the applicant provide, uh, example, um, product information for these. I'd like to take a look at that. Um, but with the understanding that, uh, at this point in the applicant's design, uh, they haven't done their electrical engineering yet, uh, and they won't until they get, uh, past this approval and closer to, um, their building permit submission. Uh, at that time, uh, I've already been in discussions with Jim as well as the new, uh, town building official to involve Fussin O'Neil in that review process as well, to make sure that, um, any of the conditions of approval, uh, that the board includes for this particular project will be carried through and, um, you know, met at that stage. And there won't be any, anything lost, uh, you know, in that transition from, uh, this reviewing entity and then the, the building official re- reviewing entity. Um, did I misspeak when I said that it's gonna be below-grade, uh, vaults? Is that the intent?
That's correct. And the last meeting, you guys had concerns about the overground, the un- above-ground poles, so this was just a fix to, uh, to help out, you know, what, what you desired.
Oh, so these vaults are underground? Oh, okay. So they're not, they're not seven feet, three, three of these seven feet high?
It's not clarified in the plans currently. Uh, that's why I made the comment. I, I wanted to get, uh, written confirmation from the applicant that these are actually gonna be uh, below grade. Um, you know, the term vault can be interpreted as below grade, but that's not confirmed at the moment in the application documents.
So would the top of the vault be kind of flush-mounted with the grade, like the tent or maybe?
It would not be flush-mounted. It would likely, the vault top would likely sit about eight inch, eight to twelve inches above grade. And then the equipment would sit on top of that.
And again, if, that still doesn't answer the, building a structure within ten feet of another person's property.
Yep, I think we mentioned that we would be willing to move them, so.
And, uh, do you guys need more time to get the, uh, final three waivers in regards to this property? Or did you have any intention of getting them? Or where do you stand on this?
Normally I would be asking, excuse me, Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. Counselor Ford on behalf of the applicant, getting that out of the way. Um, normally I would, at this point, ask that we talk to the town council and get their opinion. Uh, it sounds like Jim has on a previous opinion. I have a project, rather. I understand that this is the planning board, so everything is taken on its own merits and we have no problem asking again. Um, I would respectfully submit if it was a fairly recent opinion that we're asking and spending tax money to get the same opinion twice. Um, but respectfully, uh, if town council, which is your lawyer, normally it's who I argue with, is saying you don't need everybody and that we meet the intent of the bylaw, we would, uh, follow his, his guidance.
Uh, I, I disagree with the, uh, the, the town lawyer, so we can take it from there. I don't think they have the authority to, um, reinterpret something that we have interpreted quite differently over the course of several years. I, I don't think that all of a sudden because it got failed at, or turned back to the planning board at the last town meeting, that this is something that we can just come in and legally reinterpret and be expected to take it a, and, and run with it. But I, I appreciate your, your coming here tonight. Thank you.
But actually in past practice, the board has approved projects where only close-in properties had to receive waivers. So like, for example, Rochester Road.
I can only go by what was approved by the, uh, by the Attorney General and the town of, uh, Carver. And it's, to me, that, the, the language is pretty clear. Um, waivers are required in writing by all director butters in a residential agricultural district. An affidavit signed by all owners of record of all director butters within a residential agricultural zoning district. Now, I understand that if the property is, if the project is six hundred feet from an abutting property, that we have the ability to reduce screening in that case, but that's the only exception that I, I see to this. So I would respectfully disagree with the town council and I, I feel that I'm gonna have to, um, go strictly by the will of the town and, and what was approved by the Attorney General.
Well, it just seems a little redundant to me to, these people are already two hundred feet back from the, from their property line. I mean, it, it's, so it doesn't affect them. They're two hundred feet back. And the, the thing is, is, you know, we, we're starting to go down a slippery slope. I see it on a lot of boards where, you know, we have town council. You ask, you ask town council for an opinion because you need some help interpreting the bylaw. And then once town council gives you an opinion, then people say, well, I don't believe in, I don't believe town council. I, I just don't think that they're right. I-
I appreciate your opinion.
You know, I mean, it just, it just, why even bother to have town council then? You know, uh, it's,
I, I'm sorry.
To me, I've always been told that i- i- if you, if something goes to town council, and I've been told by other boards and members of other boards and chairmans of other boards that what town council says should be obeyed. So, that's all I have to say.
Just to echo a little bit of what, uh, Connie's saying. We had, uh, an amendment to the bylaw. Go before town meeting and was rejected, sent back
Oh.
to, uh, to the, uh, to the, to the meet, to the, uh, committee to be reworded, reevaluated and everything else like that. So it seems to me that the town wants to make sure that everybody uh, has their input, not just the ones that are most closely affected.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but was that the, the entire reason that it was denied, the amendment?
No, no, exactly. No, there was other rea- there was-
There were a whole bunch of provisions and, and so the entire thing was, uh, sent back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not so sure if it was this one thing, 'cause that we had a dozen or more
things we wanted to change.
There was a bunch of things that were sent back that were due to be voted on. They weren't lumped in. It wasn't, here's a whole bunch of stuff, let's vote on this, pass or don't. It was individual items and they all got sent back.
Well, we did do a detailed review of the, of the, of the bylaw as it's written and enacted without looking at what was or was not. And so to start off in section, uh, I guess thirty-five eighty twenty-five one, the project must comply with a two-hundred-foot setback from adjacent properties. And the amendment is sort of an if-then statement. So if you are unable to comply with that, then you request a waiver from those abutting properties and can reduce it up to fifty feet. So the primary driver is a setback of two-hundred feet and we comply with that with most of these abutters. In the instances we do not comply with that setback, we are required to obtain an affidavit waiving that, which we have done. And it's right in the bylaw.
Chairman, is that correct?
Yeah, no, it is. It says, you're right, it is in here. It says, uh, "All director butters in a residential agricultural zoning district." And it repeats it. "All director butters within a residential agricultural zoning district." I mean, it, it clearly says it. All, all. It's, and, and that's what I'm going by. And, and I'm afraid there's, there's very little here that can change my mind in regards to this, so I appreciate it, but I'm sure the board will give you more time if you wish to seek to get those waivers. I'm sure that we could find that time if that's the issue.
Well, did any of the other board members have any questions, concerns, comments? Or is it just gonna be Mr. Shea?
Um, well, additionally on that, too, uh, when we're looking at the, um, at the driveway and the, the, the entranceway into, coming off of Meadow Street, the, uh, at least as drawn, you've got the, uh, the entrance overlapping the existing driveway of the abutting property. I mean, as, you know, if I was a resident there, I would, I would want the space, you know, uh, as far as, uh, you know, stay off my driveway kind of thing. But, um, you, it, it, it makes a dog leg right there near the end. And straightening out that dog leg would probably move that, uh, in the looks of things. I'm just going off the as-drawn right now. Uh, that would probably, uh, move that driveway off and open up that, that gap, uh, right there to keep the, uh, to keep your entranceway off of the other, off of the abutting driveway.
Now, uh, thank you for the feedback and, and that's a great point. Um, we did recently get, uh, an opinion from operations and maintenance and they seemed okay with the driveway. Uh, we submitted that to Jim as well, but, um, if you have any, you know, concerns about that, we can consider changes.
I don't know, what was said again? You, you get a driveway that's going over the driveway?
Yeah, if you look at the larger picture, the, you've got the existing driveway here. And then the, you know, it makes a dog leg right there at the end. And
Come, the rounding zone.
Cuts, cuts over. Their, their flare out there basically cuts over and basically joins the, uh, the driveways. Of the, uh, the existing driveway.
So is that existing driveways that paved, uh?
Correct, and it falls within the existing road, right of way?
But I-
It was also an attempt to minimize clearing close to the road. It is kind of loosely following, uh, existing path as much as possible. So I was trying to keep as much of the vegetation close to the road as I could. Um, but again, I, I don't think this exact location is, I, I think that could be a condition of the permit to shift the driveway further into the middle of the road, or into the middle of the, uh-
Or shift the driveway off the-
Shift itself, I think, could be.
Yeah, yeah. Shift it off the, the, the access to the field. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else? Any other board members have any other questions?
Mr. Chair, so personally I have an issue with clearing. I understand and appreciate the fact that we are clearing for solar, which is another entity that, you know, I, I feel like we're switching one for the other. And in this case, I do know that, um, we have a program, Jim, where we can, um, ask for volunteer, voluntary donation where we do replantings somewhere else because of the amount that's coming down. I just, personally, I have a problem with changing one out for the other. So we're cutting trees down for solar, you know, where and I see that you are meeting the requirements because it got the project cut bigger so that the amount it was at first was almost, in my opinion, it was eighty-five, it was close to eighty-five percent was being cleared and now it's cut back to forty-six point one. But, um, maybe somehow, uh, we could do something where, you know, uh, we could add to that replanting fund and-
I'm not sure if there was an actual fund setup, but, um, you know, if, if the applicant wanted to volunteer something maybe to a local nonprofit that does tree planting or some kind of forest-based conservation kind of thing, you know, maybe that's where you go.
Yeah, we're, we're open to making a donation. And we actually talked to, to Brooke and Jim about different, even some nonprofits as well in the community. Um, so we've had those conversations. I think Brooke was, we're waiting to get back from Brooke on, on different, uh, ones that she had, but-
I think you mentioned the Loudland Trust and then there was another organization.
Yeah, so-
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we, we've been looking at that.
I'm just not comfortable with changing one resource for another.
And if, I'm not sure you were here at the last meeting that we presented, but it's definitely worth noting that, you know, there's a lot of peer-reviewed research that shows that installing solar is actually, you know, equivalent to planting tens of thousands of trees in terms of its impact, positive impact on the, on the, on the environment when it comes to global carbon. So I think that it's great that they're gonna sort of do some in-kind work, but you know, based on data that's been provided by the Mass Clean Energy Center, uh, and DOE R, you know, using solar to produce our power is a ninety percent reduction in-
No, I understand, but we're changing, we're changing-
Sure, it's a change.
-wood for metal structure.
Sure, but, but there's an equivalency there that, that can't be ignored, I guess, on my point.
No, and I appreciate you making that heard so that it can, you know, so people can hear that and, and know that that's what's going on. I just, it's a personal thing with me.
Sure.
Where, you know, I just have a tough time changing one resource. But I, I like the solar. I like the idea of it. And I appreciate you explaining that it's good for the environment.
And it sounds like they're willing to make-
Yeah, we're willing to make a donation. And were you at the site walk in February?
I was unable to make it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, it's pretty, uh, pretty rough site in terms of, you know, what's there. So not only, and we would be cutting down some trees, about forty-six percent, we're also restoring, um, you know, the, the damaged cars on the, on the property. It's, it's not the best property in the world, you know, so-
I heard that earlier that you were removing those. So, I mean, that's a good thing to get those out of there.
Yeah, so, uh, net positive on that. And, and also, we're gonna work with Jim and, uh, Brooke on, on making a donation if approved.
All right, uh, so, uh, okay, so I guess the board members have asked their questions. Um, this is still, uh, opened up, uh, to public. Is there any, uh, abutters here that have anything to say? A- anybody that wants to make any comments about this project at all? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll entertain a motion to-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize for cutting you off.
That's right.
I, I actually have a question. Um, mainly because Mr. Gasky and Mr. Shea both had significant questions about where things are located. We've agreed, um, and it's in the record now, it's as conditions of approval to basically do everything that both gentlemen asked in those regards.
Okay.
I understand we have a difference of opinion on, on the, uh, abutters, but as far as the physical plant, everything you guys asked for, my engineer tells me we can do and we will. Um, but I want, I'm asking guidance from the board. Are you comfortable with that as a condition of appro- of, of approval? Or if we're coming back in two weeks anyways with the modified plan, would you rather us just come back with a clean plan?
Well-
I, I wanna make it as, um, clear and comfortable for your board that you're voting, hopefully, um, positively for a project that, that you understand. I'm not trying to drag things out. I'm happy to condition it, but I also don't want a, a no vote because someone isn't really sure where the driveway's going.
Well, I'm, as far as my concerns, I'm happy with, uh, it being part of the, uh, the conditions on, on approval. That's-
Okay, that's-
I, you know, no need to, uh, kill a few more trees to, uh, for that.
I think that it should be off, but, um, again, I'm having difficulty with the, um, lack of waivers and, and that's kind of a sticking point with me. But I do appreciate the, uh, the, uh, ability to move the equipment and the, uh, the roadway to a more appropriate spot.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, what I, what my plan was is I was gonna close the public hearing and then I was gonna address these, these issues. I think the, the biggest hurdle here, and I don't know how many members feel about this, is the two-hundred-foot setback and getting the, uh, affidavits from, from the people to approve the, the setbacks. Even the people that are within two-hundred feet. We've already talked about that. We've gone to town council about this. We've even had members of the solar committee say that their intention was not to get affidavits to the people.
I don't think that's appropriate.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, to be fair, actually, one of the two-hundred-foot butters has an approved solar farm. Uh, it was recently approved. So, I mean, they're, it, you know-
That was over six hundred feet. That was over six hundred feet away. The project site was over six hundred feet away from this, which allows us to do certain amount of, uh, reduced screening on that, yeah.
But anyway, we did have, we did get a legal opinion on this and they said that we didn't have to, that, that an applicant didn't have to get, uh, a waiver from, from people that, that had, that the two-hundred-foot setback, uh, was, uh, happened to their property. If it, if the, you could meet the two-hundred-foot setback, but they didn't need a waiver from them. But now we have, I don't know how many board members here tonight. I mean, I don't know where this leaves us. Um, I think we can over, overcome the, the driveway and the utilities on the driveway. I don't know where the vote's gonna go tonight, uh, about this two-hundred-foot setback, um, which, which brings up a couple of questions. If, if you could get, uh, if you could go to the neighbors and, and get that, if, if not, then, uh, I mean, but then again, it also leads us down the road. We already got a legal opinion on this, um, and, and they said we didn't, and, uh, the legal opinion was we didn't have to get waivers from these people. So if, if we ask somebody to get waivers from these people, well, where does that lead us on the next projects?
If, if it helps, you're not asking for waivers from them. You're just, you can keep the two-hundred-foot setback if that makes any difference. Uh, that's not the issue. It's, it's them agreeing to, to sign that... Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, and I think that what, our position is that a waiver isn't required if you comply with the primary driver in the ordinance. So based on our interpretation, if you're compliant with thirty-five-eighty point twenty-five point one, a waiver is not required. For those abutters where a waiver would be required, you must submit an affidavit. That is our interpretation of the bylaw and we comply with it. That's our position.
I, um, I defer to legal counsel on this item in particular. As a engineering consultant, I try to keep to my realm of, uh, you know, black and white items, uh, in design. Um, but I, uh, got the impression that the board was suggesting that the applicant could get, uh, a waiver from the other, uh, abutters approving fifty-foot setback from the other abutting properties and still maintaining the two-hundred-foot from their abutting properties. Was, was that the intent of, of your comment? To get approval from the other abutter to allow fifty-foot reduced setback for the other property boundaries?
For, for the project, yes, not necessarily on their side of the project, but because of the project as a whole has to be taken, as you know, as, as the primary engineer on this, it has to be taken as a whole rather than a piecemeal issue. And, and I, unfortunately, in order to allow reduced setbacks, again, it repeats it twice and I, I gotta, I gotta say that it's not a mistake. It doesn't say from the, from the project or anything. It says all direct abutters from, in a residential district. And, and I think, I think because it's repeated in there, uh, it's stated twice, I, I would have to go as that was the intent of the creators. And lacking anybody here that could say differently, I'm just gonna have to go with the, the literal wording of as written.
All right. So I guess it's up to you, if, if you wanna take a vote tonight on this or if you wanna see if you can get waivers. If you don't feel that, uh, you wanna get waivers or that waivers, uh, are not necessary, then we'll take a vote tonight.
Mr. Chair, are you still gonna close the public hearing?
Yes, yeah, I'll do that, but, uh...
And, and even if we, even if it, if it passes, great for them. If it doesn't pass, they still have an a- alternative to, to take it to the ZBA and see whether there, there's agreement or disagreement in that. There's a, there's a, a process for appeal. This isn't all on our shoulders.
Yeah, how would that go? I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if that would, does this go to the, well, I, I, I don't even know if I would wanna go. I don't even know if I wanna go there at, right now. So, uh, how do you feel? What do you wanna do? Just take a vote tonight and see?
Yeah, let's close the public hearing, please.
Wanna close the public hearing and you wanna take a vote on it?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, um, all, all I can say is, is, is that we did get an opinion from legal counsel, say it once more. And, and legal counsel said that, that we did not need waivers for the people that met the two-hundred-foot setback. All right, so, uh, I need a, a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Mr. Robinson made the motion, Mr. Shea, uh, second, and, uh, see, we're not on TV tonight, so we can just do, uh, uh, just do a vocal vo- vote. Uh, so, uh, those in favor, uh, to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was unanimous. All right. Uh, do you wanna read the conditions, Jim?
All right, so, all right, so condition number one, uh, the applicant shall revise the site plan with minor revisions in the drainage report as recommended by Fussin O'Neill in its September tenth, twenty-twenty-one comment letter and present to the planning board at its September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting for final site plan approval. The applicant shall show on the plan where it tends to place vegetative screening along the site's northern boundary and limited vegetation, vegetative screening within the natural opening on the southern boundary. The applicant shall also install vegetative screening around the interconnection vaults and equipment. Condition number two, the project shall be constructed according to the approved site plan and decision. Any revisions to the project will acquire approval from the board as a modification of, of this decision. Uh, condition number three, the applicant shall adhere to the recommendations of the fire department found in the comment letters dated February twelfth, twenty-twenty-one and August eighth, twenty-twenty-one, addressing energy storage systems, general conditions and site access. The fire department must approve in writing any modifications to its recommendations. Item number four, if the applicant sells or transfers to solar project, the seller and buyer must come before the planning board to review the approved site plan and decision and affirm the project will be constructed according to the approved site plan and decision. Condition number five, the solar panels shall not exceed twelve feet in height above grade as shown on, uh, sheet C dash one point oh-two details on the site plan titled Atwood Solar, two-twenty-three Meadow Street, cover mass, map eighty-two, lot one dash one, dated January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, revised February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, July twelfth, twenty-twenty-one and August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, prepared for Ironwood Renewable LLC, prepared by Cribs and Lansing Consulting Engineers. Condition number six, the owner operator of the solar project shall submit an annual report to the board through the planning director, no later than forty-five days after the end of the calendar year, certifying compliance with approved plans and requirements. Condition number seven, the applicant shall notify the planning board through the planning director by certified mail of the proposed date of discontinued operations and plans for removal of the solar project. The solar project shall be removed no more than hundred-twenty days after the date of discontinued operations. Condition number eight, the applicant shall submit a site-specific decommissioning plan to be approved by the planning board with the revised site plan as set forth in condition one above. The applicant shall also provide financial security as described in section thirty-five-eighty-point-five-three. Number nine, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall submit a record of construction, general permit coverage and the site-specific stormwater pollution prevention plan, uh, also known as the SWIP, which includes a figure that depicts the proposed location of controls. Condition number ten, prior to any site disturbance in construction, the limits of approved site disturbances and vegetation clearing limits shall be surveyed and clearly marked by a professional land surveyor. Upon completion of the survey, the professional land surveyor shall verify in writing to the planning board, uh, that the limit of work as shown on the approved site plans has been established on site. Condition number eleven, dust control is required during construction and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt or debris. Condition number twelve, construction equipment and trucks shall not idle or operate on-site prior to seven AM. Construction activities shall occur only, only occur Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, condition thirteen, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the permitting department. Condition fourteen, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid, shall be paid. Fifteen, the applicant shall provide the planning board written documentation of ever source's approval of the proposed interconnection. Condition sixteen, developer shall submit to a ground fuels manacuring maintenance schedule to the permitting department and the fire department. The fire department shall approve the ground fuels maintenance schedule. Seventeen, developer shall submit an emergency response plan to the fire department and the permitting department. Eighteen, developer shall receive from the fire department acceptance of the proposed site access in writing prior to the issuance of a building permit. Such written acceptance shall be submitted with the building permit application. Condition nineteen, the applicant shall have received approval from the planning board for all signage required under section thirty-five-eighty point two-six point two and shall provide detailed signage information, including location sizes of warning signage on the final compu- construction plan set submitted to the building commissioner. Condition twenty, the applicant shall submit the contact information for the system installer as part of the building permit submission. Prior to issuance of an electrical permit, deckman, the applicant shall provide the town with a decommissioning bond of four hundred-twenty-five percent of the decommissioning cost of the project according to the decommissioning plan. Condition twenty-two, the applicant shall ensure compliance with the national electric code requirements on access, fencing and security. A statement of compliance shall be submitted to the building commissioner and planning director by the electrical inspector. Condition twenty-three, final electrical line diagram stamped by licensed professional engineer shall be submitted to the town with a building permit submission. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy and use, the applicant shall provide any requested training to the fire department for mitigating emergencies on site. Condition twenty-five, the developer shall receive from the fire department written, written acceptance of the final condition of access roads prior to, uh, ray operation. Condition twenty-six, as-built plans shall be submitted to the towns engineer and permitting department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. And condition twenty-seven, in accordance with section thirty-one-eighty, compliance of the zoning bylaws, the towns engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it's been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions.
And then we had some concerns by the planning board about, uh, driveway relocation, the part of the driveway that, that runs over the, uh, driveway to the project.
Right, so I guess, um, maybe part of that, um, coming back to the planning board on September twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Those things could be included, um, relocating the, um, I believe the util-, uh, the, the vaults from one side of the driveway to the, is it from the north side to the south side of...
Yeah, we can get all that done in two weeks.
Okay, so move, uh, tch, 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 vaults to south side of driveway. And then the other part of it was, uh...
Replantings, I saw.
The plantings?
Replantings, you know, you were gonna work with Brooke?
Right, so we'll, uh, really can't put that in as a condition because we can't mandate it, but, uh, they volunteered to, to do it. So we'll, we'll work with them on that matter.
You can make it as a note that it's, that it, they are willing.
Okay, we can, uh, add something there. Um, so let's move the vaults. What was the other piece we talked about changing?
Uh, the access road.
Oh, move.
Okay. Not road. Okay. Move.
Access road apron, right? Road slash apron. And that was gonna move more towards the south. And then three, add, uh, applicant to work with planner and conservation agent regarding donation. Does that sound okay, Kevin? Donation to nonprofit, I guess.
All right, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit and site plan review, uh, along with the, uh, conditions as read.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second it.
The motion by Kevin, second by Ellen. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, okay, those in favor to approve the application of Ironwood Renewable LLC on two-twenty-three Meadow Street, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, uh, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so we have three, four and two against. Two nays, three ahs. So what do we need for a, uh, a vote on this project?
So special permits are four-fifths, so, um, the, so the motion, uh, does not pass. So we need four out of the five, uh, members to vote positively.
So, well, thank you for your presentation and, uh...
The, uh, I think like, uh, with Mr. Shea, um, the, we, I have no problem revoting...
John, could you speak into your microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I have no problem revoting with, uh, once the waivers are taken care of, but, I mean, the, it clearly states in the bylaws, uh, to make sure we get everybody. And considering how, um, it was, these things were treated at, uh, town meeting, I, uh, I think very much we need to stick with what, uh, the bylaws are.
All right, so I don't, I don't know how that, how that goes. So, uh, so we're, so John just stated that he would, would approve it if we could get the, the abutters that are two-hundred feet back to sign waivers. So I don't know how, I guess that'll have to be worked out or if it can be. Now that we voted it, now that we, yeah, it just makes it a messy, messy situation.
I don't know if you can take another vote and then vote that with a condition? I don't, I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
I think the board respectfully would have to, actually it'd have to be Mr. Gasky or Mr. Shea, because they're voting in the negative.
Yes.
They could make a motion to re-vote, um, because the decision has not actually been issued right now. Prior to that, um, you could vote, re-vote tonight that, I'm trying to figure out how best to do this. Um, the hearing was closed, but we hear loud and clear what the, the sticking point is. Um, so you could make a motion to re-vote and then add a condition that it would be subject to us providing waivers from all of the abutters. And if that wasn't done by a time certain, either the next hearing or, I don't know if we need a month to get this, that it becomes null and void. Once the decision is final and filed, I think it becomes more problematic, but it... Once the decision is final and filed, I think it becomes more problematic, but at this point, pretty much Robert's Rules are, are what drives what you can do. And so pretty much the two no votes have the option, should they decide to ask for a re-vote, propose a condition, propose that you just postpone the vote. I believe you have two weeks until the next meeting. I think you could do any of those.
Okay.
But that would be certainly up to two gentlemen.
I think the best way would be to appeal within 20 days to the ZBA. Might, I feel that's the appropriate way to handle this.
But, but then here we go again, then i- if it goes to the ZBA, ZBA's gonna ask for legal opinion, legal opinion by town council has already been...
Maybe they'll, they'll find, they'll come to a different...
Sounds like we're chasing our tail here.
Yeah, but that's not our concern. What the ZBA does is not our concern, we, we, that's entirely up to that board.
So how do you feel about this, John? I put you on the spot, would you, would you, if, if they could, would you approve, would, if, if we redo the, a vote to put in the conditions that you would approve the project if, if, if all the, the abudders signed waivers?
Well, the question, the question on this is, what is the, what's the proper thing, what's the proper legal thing to do at this point? We've all, the, the vote was taken at the request of the...
Maybe we should seek legal counsel.
The vote, the...
I'm sorry, that was inappropriate, and I do apologize to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Now, before we did this vote, we asked them if they want, they asked for the vote tonight, knowing that we wanted abudders. And they got the result, and now we wanna change it.
They didn't, they didn't know how many people were gonna vote for the project or against the project, so you...
They haven't known that from day one.
They what?
They haven't known who's gonna vote for or against any project from day one.
No, no.
They were offered the opportunity.
Right, yes.
This was, this was the point that I was about to make.
If you could just make sure that you're talking to them.
This was, this was the point that I was just about to make, was that, um, they had, we gave them the option to have a vote tonight or to come back. And they opted in for the vote tonight, so now it's, it moves on to the next proper step in, in how to, in how to move forward. And that is, do they reapply and come back before us, or do they have to go to the zoning board? I'm not sure exactly what the, what the, what the proper direction to turn is on this right now.
I think both are options.
So, I mean, at the, at, like I said, at this point, the, it's been rejected on...
All right, all right, so I, I guess no matter what, you're not gonna get the vote here, no matter what.
And we're fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so then you just have to figure out what, where you're gonna go.
Taking the next steps as the bylaw requires.
Okay.
No issues. Thank you.
I mean, I, I suppose if you go to ZBA and you get the signatures, then it'll be fine, I, but, but I guess you know tonight what, the way the vote's gonna be.
That's absolutely fine, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on. So we had, number two was the application of Miriam Gorey, and that was continued to September 28th at our last meeting. Oh, from...
So he says he needs signature for the motion voted last week.
So that had been continued at our last meeting to September 28th. We also had another, was the application of JCM Cobre Acquisitions LLC, and that was on 287 Tremont Street, and that was also continued to September 28th at our last meeting. So we have a minor modification that's before us right now, and that's our next, next, thank And this is a request for a minor modification to site plan 96 Forest Street, EJ CP LLC, Eric Pontiff, to modify approved site plan to allow owner to combine four bays and five bay rear building to lease to tenant of front building. And this was continued from August 31st. Do we have anybody here to represent that project?
Uh, no, we don't.
They were notified that we were gonna...
Right, they knew the meeting was continued to tonight. I would suggest we just go ahead and grant another continuance until the 28th, then we can contact them and find out what's going on.
Well, wasn't there, wasn't there something in the, in the notes that was sent out that the reason, the reason for it was because the nutrient is expanding, they needed the extra storage, and that's what...
Right.
Everything's being, the fire department's still looking into it?
And they were also looking into legal counsel regarding the language of the tradesman building to warehouse, or...
Right, right.
You know, so there's a fire department too, doing...
Right, the fire department's still looking into it, and the, and the...
And whether it's a minor modification due to the amount of work that the fire department is saying...
Right.
Is required is, it's an extensive amount of work.
Well, no matter what, there, there's some issues here, and we're looking for, and we still need some answers from, from places that the, the fire department had questions about, so that's why I was looking for somebody here to represent this tonight, because, you know, there was questions that we all had here.
Right.
So, okay, so I, I see, I see no other choice but to continue it to our next meeting.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna say, Mr. Pontiff, in his email to, to Jim, says that he doesn't think that, he says it's pretty straightforward, and he doesn't think legal counsel's needed.
But then he uses the word "storage."
Right.
Well, I think we'll get into that when we hear it, but we're not gonna hear this tonight, so, so let's, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the request for a minor modification for 96 Forest Street to, let's see, September 28th at 7:00.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Kevin, second by John Gadskey. Further discussion? All right, let's vote. Those in favor for the, to be continued to September 28th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous to continue to September 28th. All right, so, next, we have preliminary subdivision plan for proposal lot two subdivision, 476 acres, it's located off of Wareham Street, is to be created from assesses map 134 lots four dash two, lot four, four dash one, and four dash two, and four dash three, and is proposed by AD Makepeace Company from Wareham. All right, so this was continued from our previous meeting. I think we had, I think it was presented to us, and I think we were, I think I was, I was looking to see if Andy from Fussin' O'Neil had, had looked at this before, but I, I know that you have now, so, if you wanna come up and, and introduce yourself, please?
Sam, I'm Ellie with JC Engineering. And, yeah, last, at the last meeting, we were waiting till the, the technical review meeting, kinda get feedback from all departments, which we, which we had received, few comments
So, all right, so have those been addressed?
Um, so we had just received the, the reviews from Fussin' O'Neil last night, so we haven't got to address those just yet. However, reviewing these, they do seem minor enough where we can address these when we come forward with the definitive plan.
Andy, do you have anything to say about this, since you're here with us tonight?
Do I need to introduce myself again? What's, what's the etiquette on that? All right. So, as the applicant mentioned, we did issue comments on this, but there hasn't been sufficient time for them to address any comments, and quite frankly, probably not enough time for the board members to really thoroughly read through the comments we provided, but I did wanna provide some comments prior to this meeting. It's a preliminary plan, so the level of detail that the applicant provided for this is not extensive. There is a couple design revisions specifically with the, the grading that I think should be done at this stage, and I guess it should be, the waivers that the applicant is requesting, there's, there's three here. Overall, I, in my professional opinion, those waiver requests are reasonable, and if the applicant were to, I guess, provide the information outlined in those waivers, I don't think it would provide any additional information to the board or the town to, you know, really waive this, this preliminary plan. Specifically, I can talk to those under section 5.3.2.4, they're requesting a waiver for providing perspect, prospective street layouts for adjacent land, and basically, the area of land that this owner has, there is a significant number of options for what potential street layouts could be, and, you know, by right, the, the board could require the applicant to provide some of those layouts, but it wouldn't necessarily restrict or prohibit certain layouts from, in the future. They're proposing creating two lots, but the size of those two lots, there's still a lot of options for future development on those, those two lots. The other waiver is similar. Perimeter of all contiguous land under ownership, that, that's something I think the applicant could do, but I don't know if it would, I don't believe that it would provide any additional information to the, the board in this regard for this particular project. But I, I think the applicant, if the board required it, could provide more sheets and a larger scale plan showing the budding properties that this owner owns. And under section 5.3.2.20, the applicant's requesting a waiver for providing all the boundaries for all the wet ones on the property, which, again, I think having the applicant conduct that process would be, I guess it would, it would require a lot of time and effort from the applicant, as well as the town conservation agent and commission, that wouldn't sufficiently provide any additional information for approving this. It should be noted that the applicant did provide an estimate of the upland and wetland area on the property, and with that information, as well as the requirements for lot area within this zone, the board could deduce a number of lots that could be future subdivided, or, you know, options for development on, on this property. But I don't think that would necessarily provide any additional input for, for this particular road that's proposed and subdivision. The grading, they provided, I guess, I would like to have them actually revise the proposed grading for the road. It, it's not currently proposed as a crowned road, so that, that's a, definitely a change to the con, proposed contours I would like to see. We did take a look at the proposed cut for this subdivision, and the profile that they show, they have a maximum cut of about nine feet, but that is at a localized point on site. I would say in general, they're proposing a four to six foot cut around where the cul-de-sac is located for the subdivision. It's a notable volume of soil that would need to be removed here, but not, in my professional opinion, excessive amount, where after this grading was conducted and that material was removed, the proposed topography would, would blend in with the existing topography where the proposed road would be set three or four feet below the adjacent, I guess, future developable land. And that's something Fussin' O'Neil, as well as the town, would take a closer look at the definitive plan level. But the board does have the ability to ask them to revise the proposed grading to minimize the cut, and that, that is outlined in the subdivision rules and regulations, so I, I wanted to make note of that as well.
So you're saying that they're, they're doing a, a cut for the road?
Correct, and it's, um...
Yeah, how much, how much was that? Do you remember?
Uh, we, the applicant didn't provide a, a volume, and I don't believe, I don't recall seeing anything in the town regulations at this level that require them to provide a, a cut or fill volume. I can't hypothesize to the applicant's goals of this subdivision request, but I can say that the, if this was approved and moved forward and got definitive plan approval and was developed, the final condition of the site with the proposed grading, with the exception of alter, making the grading change to a crowned road, wouldn't be unrealistic or uncharacteristic of other subdivisions that my firm has designed or seen developed elsewhere.
Okay, so this, so the, the cut could be changed in the definitive plan, is that what you're saying? I mean, they, they don't have to stick exactly to, to what they have here, that, that can be changed.
Right, if, if the board had, you know, concerns now, it's definitely something that they could ask the applicant to revise at this stage, and I, I guess I leave it to the applicant to kind of discuss that, that aspect of it.
Okay.
But right now, they're looking at a four to six foot, I would say, average cut in a two and a half percent slope on the road coming in, which, you know, will be a, well within realistic characteristics of, of subdivision.
Because generally, you, you wanna cut the road in so that anything drains into the road, and then drain, goes into your drainage system.
Yeah, you wanna, property owners would wanna have their, their home set slightly above the road, and, you know, pending test pits on site, and, you know, it's possible that you could excavate a lot more soil out of this area. I don't think that that's, you know, it's a, they're not creating a hole, essentially, that's for the proposed...
I don't know if you want to address that?
Yeah, so we, I mean, as you can see, we have plenty of frontage along Wareham Street here, so I know the note was possibly considering moving this layout, which we would consider as an alternative. We were just showing this in the grading kind of in a conceptual manner to get feedback, but adjusting the grading and possibly moving the roadway could be considered.
Yeah, I don't know if, we wouldn't, yeah, I don't think I have the topographic plan here that we had last, at our last meeting, but, I mean, I just thought that this preliminary plan just kind of showed where you want to put the road. Yeah, this, so this one here just shows the general topography there. That was on sheet two, and sheet three. That's just the rest of the property. Okay, so, okay, so then we go over to the last sheet, and that shows the, so seventy-eight.
So, sheet four depicts the plan view and the profile view of the proposed roadway.
Yeah.
The profile view runs the center line of the proposed road, so it is faint on the plan, but they do have existing contours, and that, I believe it's a ninety-two, is a smaller surface area where the maximum cut is kind of going through the center line, but the, you know, surrounding area around the proposed cul-de-sac is closer to elevation between eighty-eight, around eighty-eight, maybe six. But they could shift the proposed alignment to avoid that crest of that hill. That said, anyone that was developing that property would most likely cut that hill down, developing the, you know, whatever, at this point, we don't know. I guess, actually, for the TRC, they were proposing single-family residences, so if there was going to be a structure or building located on that piece, they would cut that hill out anyways for that development. So, I don't think that shifting the road alignment, you know, north-south, too much would make a drastic difference in the volume of cut at this location.
Well, living in the coastal area and having gone through a couple hurricanes recently, I think it's important to maintain some amount of small hills in this town. We're losing our biggest coastal barrier down here on Silver Street as we speak. I mean, that, the one hill in town, I mean, we've got to remember that we need to keep some semblance of protection from the wind from the three sides that we get it from.
Yeah, not knowing what's going to happen, there, this is a cut, but that's so that the existing lane can drain it. I don't really have any problems with it.
I thought your number nine, your recommendation from number nine was very good.
All right, do we have, I don't know, any other questions by any of the board members?
I just, what exactly are we approving here?
Well, this is a, this is a preliminary subdivision plan, so it shows where the road is, where this new road, Fox Run Drive, is going to be on Wareham Street.
I'm sorry?
Fox Run Drive will be a private road?
Correct.
And it just shows, on a preliminary plan, it just shows where the road is and how it's going to be graded.
And now that, and from what I understand from Andy, that's not going to be built until...
There's another review stage that has to come before the planning board definitive plan, and then that would be before, after that stage, or actually during that stage, the applicant needs to further progress their design. There's, you know, slightly more requirements on what needs to be included in that application process, and then after that, then they would, you know, need to go to, I get their building permits for, you know, the proposed individual lots that they would be developing, and, you know, potentially site plan review, depending on the type of development they were proposing for this subdivision.
Mr. Chair, just want to read for the record. So, I got an email from Kevin Ford, the health agent. It's not in your packet, just based on one sentence. Please note that the board health has no issues or comments related to the above, so this is not the preliminary subdivision plan. And then I do have a letter from Brooke Monroe, the conservation agent, I believe it's on the other packets. So, she's reviewed the project, and essentially what she's saying, here's on the plan that the bogs and wetlands are outside the one-hundred-foot buffer, however, there is no indication as to how the boundary of the wetlands was determined. For this reason, I would recommend that the applicant file abbreviated notice of resource areas delineation, confirming the field location of the wetland resource areas located within the vicinity of the proposed roadway, well and separate system. And ultimately, it is decided whether it is to be proposed or the remainder of the property. The other wetland resource areas can then be delineated, if applicable, and those who attend, you know, request for determination of applicability can be filed with the conservation commission at that time.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
We also do have an Anrad plan being generated as we speak. It's going to be in front of the conservation commission soon that will delineate the front face of all wetlands and cranberry bogs closest to Wareham Street, where any development would be approved. We're just not delineating the entire four hundred and sixty-eight parcel.
Right, right. Just be way of the development of where the road's going to go anyway.
Correct, yeah.
So, if we approve this preliminary subdivision plan, it's still got to go through to the final set of plans. It's still got to go through conservation and then come back to us to approve the definitive plan.
Can we approve it with the condition of meeting Brooks' recommendations, or are those for further down the line?
Kind of act like a definitive plan, so probably for that process to meet, and it's going to be filed anyways, it sounds like.
Right.
So, you would have that information available for the definitive subdivision plan?
Right, that plan should be approved by the time we submit the definitive plan.
And I guess I, from that review and submission of the conservation commission, I don't believe that would impact the proposed road location that they have in the preliminary level right now, but it may limit where they could develop structures on adjacent properties, so I concur with Brooks' approach and defer to the conservation commission on that aspect.
But even if, even if this roadway that we approved tonight as a preliminary subdivision plan, they did find that it was too close to the wetlands or whatever, in the definitive, they'd have to change that, right?
Yeah, they still need approval from the conservation commission for any work within their jurisdictional boundaries.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't think there would be any issues there with, you know, requiring adjustments at the definitive level.
Right, I mean, they'd have to be adjustments.
I guess I defer to Jim on whether or not the board should include a condition in approval directly referencing conservation commission approval.
Okay. Do you have conditions for this tonight? Okay, so you don't have conditions for that, but maybe, so we want to take this to our next meeting, and so we could approve it with the conditions, or how do you want to do this?
So, I don't know, I guess we have a time clock requirement.
Okay, yep.
To approve it in forty-five days. I don't know what day we're on in terms of the approval.
I think that's the reason why we had to do something tonight.
The applicant wants to kind of...
Eight, ten?
Grant a waiver of the deadline so that we can come back on September twenty-eighth to...
It'll be forty-one days, yeah.
...approval. Pardon?
Sorry, forty-one days.
Forty-one days. Grant, grant an extension for the planning board to act. That's one option, and then I guess the board to further things writing, if it wants to put them writing, or I can just take comments from tonight and then take something up after the fact and then give it to the board.
I kind of like Mr. Glenn's recommendation, number nine, in regards to adapting the slope, but that's my only real concern in regards to this, and that has more to do with earth removal, although I expect a large chunk of that hill will be gone anyways.
So, number nine of the...
We're readjusting the slope a little bit. That's my only concern, and then...
So, that would have to come back at another meeting then, but in order to do that, you'd have, the applicant would have to waive the time constraints?
I believe so, yeah.
In order to put any conditions on the project, is that what you mean?
Well, if they want to relook, I mean, is it possible?
I guess I would say, you know, if the applicant requests a continuance to the twenty-eighth, then that will give Fuss and O'Neal a chance to review the revised plans, give the applicant probably a better outlook on, you know, getting more information from CONSCOM, as well as addressing more concerns of the planning board tonight.
Okay, how's that sound to you?
So, we've made note of all these comments, and we certainly plan to address these in the definitive plan. This is really just a conceptual idea of what we would like, so would it be possible to just get those conditions when we come back for the definitive plan?
I, I think you could write a condition in that the applicant would revise the grading, but I would be, I would be concerned about locking in the grading into approval, I guess, at this level, kind of...
Without having to see what the actual grading is going to be?
Right, I would want to see a grading plan.
Well, I'd be willing to forego that, but where are we in regards to the CONCOM? I mean, can we approve it without their prior approval? Can we make in conditional?
Don't we have, don't we, because we had, what I'm talking about, wetlands, approaching in on the wetlands.
Are there wetlands in this roadway area? Do you have any idea how far those wetlands are away from, I know you have approximate wetlands there.
Yes, it, I can't say exactly right now, but I could bet at least a hundred, five-hundred feet away from this road in all directions.
I mean, based on the existing topography, it's safe to say that they're adjacent, and I guess what's currently proposed on the existing conditions plan, obviously, that's not approved, verified edges, but I would say that the proposed right-of-way for the subdivision, it would be outside of conservation commission, you know, wetland borders.
Right, yeah.
Jurisdictional borders, but the project itself, you know, has a subdivision plan, and there's obviously jurisdictional wetlands on these properties, so I think that's really where Brooke and the conservation commission want to kind of verify how close they are. I think the board could include a condition that the applicant receives conservation commission approval, and I guess that's, as that's a section of the subdivision rules and regulations, you know, that's, you know, directly in your purview to do that, you know, you could grant conditional approval of that waiver request that conservation commission approves that aspect. The grading aspect, I'm not quite sure how to word a conditional.
We can wait till, we can wait till more definitive ones come in.
Yeah, the thing is, is with, I don't, where did you come up with the contours for the property? Is this, back in the good old days, when I was doing it, they used to fly the contours, or, but I know that in the end, you come up with some sort of like rough contours of the property, but where are you going to place the road? You're actually going to have to do a survey out there to verify those contours, so we don't know if those contours are really exact or not.
Correct, correct. Right now, they are just based on aerial. We have an on-the-ground survey by the road, but when we come back with the definitive plan, we plan to have a more defined contours with on-the-ground survey in this area.
So, those contours could change a bit until you have, actually have an on-the-ground survey, and where I see that you have all those slopes and everything, it's kind of hard to define. I mean, this is an approximation, so, so, so I think, you know, I'm happy with what we have here. We can, I think we could deal with this with any contours, any grading in the preliminary plan, but I think it is probably important to make sure that we put in that conservation, you know, we can approve this with the condition that conservation has to approve this to, you know, take a look at this, and which will happen when you come out with the Anrad plan that you're developing now.
Okay.
So, I see Jim busily writing over there. So, what are we, what are we going to have for conditions for tonight for this?
It just sounds like conditioning upon getting conservation commission approval.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if there's any other, because originally we had that one comment about the grading, but there's...
I guess I would like to add the condition that they're going to address, propose the road to be crowned.
Okay, so...
Connie, what language do you want regarding the conservation commission condition?
I think just approval, right?
Did you use just the general word approval?
That, yeah, they need to meet the approval recommendations, I would, I would think, because we go by their recommendations.
Well, they'll actually have an on-the- Well, they'll actually have an on-the-ground field location of this stuff when they do the ANRAD plan, so. Is there anything else, Andy, that you would be concerned with?
I don't believe there's another condition, but I do want to point out something else. Number eight in my memo, I'm really just reiterating that the town and the planning board will get another chance to look at this, and no site preparation. Tree cutting, filling, grading, or other work done in anticipation of subdivision approval shall be performed prior to definitive plan approval. So that, that's from the subdivision rules and regs, essentially just outlining that an applicant has to come back before they can actually start constructing or clearing anything at that, that location.
All right, and then we might, when it comes back to us as a definitive plan, we might want to take a site walk out there too, I guess, have them roughly mark out the road, then we could take a look at where, where it's going to go, so we can see the site distances off of the main road, and then also take a look at the cuts and fills that might be out there too. All right. Anything else? Did we leave anything out?
Proposed condition, so obtain recommendation from the Conservation Commission.
And approval.
Permission and approval. Condition two, the proposed road shall be crowned. Sound adequate?
Yes.
And then, do you want to say something about number eight in the letter regarding the, no, no-
I don't think it, I don't, I don't think it needs to be restated because it's outlined in the subdivision rules and regs, but I defer to the board if they would like that written into the decision.
If it's in the rules or regulations, we should be, we should be all set. What was that particular?
That's number eight in the Fussin' O'Neill letter.
Talking about the site prep.
Site, no site preparation-
No site preparation in anticipation.
Or other work done in anticipate, anticipating a subdivision approval, probably prior to the definitive plan approval.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to go to the definitive level, level anyway before legally, before any work can be done out there, anyway, yeah.
And did you want to take kind of a vote on the waiver requests?
Yeah, I, I should note, we believe there was a couple other waiver requests, but they pertain to scale of plans, locus plans, as well as plan view. We recommend approval of those waivers because the, the scale at what the applicant provided the information on is, is adequate for us to interpret the information on those sheets.
Okay.
Are you saying that all the waiver requests should be approved?
And, yes, the, specifically the one waiver request regarding the ANRAD is a conditional approval of that waiver, but I think all, all the other ones are, are straightforward.
So, so you're, you're recommending all, all waivers be approved?
Correct.
Okay, so approve all waiver.
How do the board members feel about that? Any, is that all right? It, it's, it's an unusual project, being over four hundred acres. I mean, it's not like it's a subdivision project and, you know, we have a butters and neighbors, and so I, I didn't think that any of this was unreasonable. All right, okay, so we have all that, we'll wait till Connie gets back. But I'll, okay, so, looking for a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for a proposed two-lot subdivision off of Wayham Street by eighty makepeace, and with the conditions as noted, and there was something else. Okay, I guess, I guess that, that'll do it.
And waivers?
And waivers, that was the, the other thing I was talking about, yeah. And, yeah, and the, and to approve all waivers.
I still make that motion.
Here's a second.
Second.
Second, Ellen? Okay, so Connie Shea made the motion, Ellen, second, further discussion, see none. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was five-zero. All right, so we're all set.
All right, thank you guys.
Well, thank you. All right, next is a request for a lot release, and this is a request for a lot release, lots nine and ten at Gilbert Estates, and Jack Williams is here tonight to speak to us about this.
Good evening, my name is Jack Williams from Williams Brothers, and we're here tonight to request the release of lot nine, lot nine and ten.
Oh, just lot nine?
Just lot nine, please. The amount of work remaining is approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars, and I've got proposals from different contractors, the paving, top coat of the paving, the top coat of the, paving of the road and sidewalk, bounds that, there are a lot of some bounds that need to be done, and then the grazing of the catch bases, that work goes to about fifty-seven thousand, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty-seven thousand dollars. We are requesting a release of lot nine, we still have lot ten-
Okay.
-under the covenant, and I believe there's enough sure yet.
Okay. All right, so we did, yeah, so Andy sent us, we have a couple memos from, oh, one anyway, from Fussin' O'Neill by Andy. Do you have anything to, to say about this?
We conducted a site inspection in April of, of 2020 at that point. Overall, the subdivision and construction was in good shape and conformance with the plans. There was a handful of action items that Fussin' O'Neill's engineers identified. We did not conduct a follow-up inspection since then to verify that they were complete, but we did look at the subcontractor estimates that the developer provided, and those values seemed accurate and reasonable for the remaining work, and we believe that the surety amount was, you know, sufficient to protect the town in, in the event that, you know, the subdivision need to be completed. So, no further comments at this time unless the, the board has any questions.
So leaving one lot aside still would allow plenty of money to do any complete, completion of the roads, drainage, whatever?
In my opinion, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions by any of the planning board members?
I, I could be mistaken, but wasn't there some issues in regards to public access to the conservation lands in regards to this property?
Was that Limbys Path? Or is that Fussin's?
That was concerned with Limbys Path, but-
Oh, that was, that was the Limbys Path?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was Limbys Path.
Looking at-
Different part of off-site.
Right, right. They, but yeah, they look similar from above.
Yeah, this, this wasn't a conservation subdivision, this is a full-blown subdivision, yeah.
Well, actually, I think this, this is a conservation-
Oh, was it?
Yeah. Ten-acre tract.
It's a, yeah, twenty-acre tract with ten lots.
So there was some land set aside for conservation. I mean, we, we haven't let the last lot go, so we could take a look at this once that comes about, but, yeah, I, we don't have, I don't, well, let me see.
I, I can't tell.
We do have plans here, but, yeah.
I'm looking at this, I don't, I can't tell you what it is.
The public land is going to be out behind lot eight.
Behind lot eight, okay.
There's a, I think there's about an eighty-acre possum out there.
Right.
And there is an easement that going right down next to the yellow lot, which is lot nine, to access that possum.
This, uh-
So this isn't the one we released lot number one on?
I'm sorry?
I said this thing is so busy, I can't even tell.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that, that, that's why I tried to highlight it in the yellow.
Well, I guess that's something we'll have to look at, at, I mean, we did have questions when Limbys Path came up, I remember.
Right, okay, but I couldn't remember which one it was.
I don't know if there was any discussions with the Conservation Commission, I don't know if we want to get into this.
No, no.
I mean, it is what it is right now, but-
Yeah, that had to do with the easement.
Right, right, or where you park, or how you get to it, yeah.
Right, right.
But, I, yeah, I mean, this may be sort of the same thing, but I guess all I can say is now is that, you know, any, anytime we have a subdivision come before us, and we do have land set aside for public access, it should have some sort of public access to it.
So is this a stream running right through the middle of some of this stuff, or?
There is, so it was a drainage-
I don't know, I can't tell.
I can't read it.
I really can't tell what, what-
What's the question?
Is this a stream that's running right through the middle of all this stuff? I don't know what-
I think that's a bog road.
Yeah, that's an old woods road. That's not a stream, the stream, there is a stream off to the left, but that's-
Oh, so the bog road?
Yeah.
Is no longer there, right?
That's not there.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay, so-
And the public access is above lot seven, as I'm looking at the paper?
Yeah, there is a public access that says twenty-foot wide open space access easement, so there is.
Oh, I can't-
There is an easement, and it's just above lot, it's between lot seven and lot nine, and then that hooks up to an easement that goes across lot eight to the, to the, to out back.
So the intention-
So there is, there is a, huh?
So you come in from, let's get the load-
You come in from the subdivision road, yep.
So you walked in off of Yule Street, then you hit the former bog road, and is that the access easement going all the way to the back to the open space area?
That's correct.
What are you looking at?
So this is the easement right there coming out here all the way.
Oh, that's something else.
And then the bog road, and then the bog road then becomes the access.
How did they get it?
No, I was wrong, that's wrong, that's, that's easement to lot eight. I don't know where.
Well, there's, there's a driveway to lot eight, and then next to that is an easement out to the back section.
Oh, okay. Yeah, to, there's an easement here, and then it hooks onto this, and then it goes out to the, yeah, it's small, hard to read, but it's, open space lot. So that's how you get, that's how you can get to it, through here, through there, but that would also be the driveway to the houses too, right?
Yeah.
And get the A through there.
Yeah, right here, it says twenty-foot wide open space easement, so it would come here, but that's how this house here gets-
This is going to be the issue here.
The driveway, and then that goes out to that, that's the conservation land there, so, I mean, it's there, it's there.
There's no fences blocking, or otherwise?
No.
At least not yet.
All right, but we're here tonight just to, we're, we're here tonight just for this lot nine.
The first property owner decides, ah, I don't like these people walking through this part of the yard.
All right, so let's, so, so I think, you know, Andy's spoken, and, and Jack Williams has spoken, so I don't think it's unreasonable to let, to release lot nine, so I'll entertain a motion to release lot nine of Gilbert Estates.
I'll make that second motion.
I'll second it.
A motion by Kevin, second by Ellen, further discussion.
Well, I, I, I just, because the right-of-way goes through it, can we make sure that while we're releasing the lot, that that's clearly unbuildable, or clearly marked, or?
Well, it will be in the end.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be in the end. I mean, actually, it's a space between lot seven and lot nine.
And then it follows the driveway around lot eight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As long as it's not blocked, or, otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was five-zero. To approve. All right, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
I brought my own this time.
Okay, planning board member notes, anybody would like to have anything to say, planning board members? We, we did have scheduled the notes for the, someone to speak about the solo project pilot taxes, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Right, so Craig Shoff, who is our Assistant Finance Director slash Assessor, he's leaving as of Friday, so he'll be no longer working for the town. So he had a meeting tonight with the Board of Assessors, so he wasn't able to make it to tonight's meeting, and so he'll not be available in the future.
All right, thank you, but we did go over it at our last meeting, I think everybody kind of got the, just, got the basic discussion. We do have the minutes of seven thirty-one, twenty-one, didn't, yeah, oh yeah, that was given to us tonight. We could, if you wanted to approve them tonight, or do you want to go over them, or table them for the next meeting, or, how does everybody feel about that?
I would make a motion to approve them.
Okay. So we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and by Connie Shea, second by John Gatski.
There is some discussion.
There is some discussion.
They don't have to be fixed, but for future reference, it's S-H-E-A.
Uh-oh.
That's important.
Uh-oh.
I thought about that.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and, okay, those in favor, do we?
No, no, the minutes. Oh, somehow I lost my clock here.
Oh, those in favor to approve, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so the next meeting date will be, uh, the twenty-eighth of this month. And then we'll go to, say, nine, uh, ten twelve and then ten twenty-six, but the next one will be nine twenty-eight. Okay, motion, uh, for adjournment?
Nine fourteen. I would like to motion for adjournment.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Uh, thank you and good night, everyone.
Thank you.